This program is recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. This is a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire School Board Meeting. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
I would like, this evening, to call to order the July 18th, 2016 Eau Claire School District Board of Education meeting. I want to thank all of you for coming tonight during the summer. It's nice to see so many people here. I also want to thank the people that are participating through our Board Docs live streaming, and thank the Chippewa Valley Community Television for providing that service and partnership for us to be able to provide that to people who cannot be here. It is one part of our goal to strengthen our connection with our community and to support that. We do use Board Docs so that people can participate at different levels. So let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. So Patty, are we in compliance with the open meetings law?
Yes, we are.
Anne, can you verify a quorum, please?
Commissioner Barstudd?
Here.
Commissioner Dux?
Here.
Commissioner Fager?
Here.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Luganville?
Here.
Commissioner Boo?
Here.
And Commissioner Harder is absent. Thank you.
The first part of our board meeting is the public forum. We provide a 30-minute period for the general public to come in and address the board. This is a time that we are not able to interact with the people that address our board, but I want you all to know who have come to do that tonight, that we are greatly appreciative of you doing that. I think as a board, we want as much community involvement as possible in our public schools. So as you come up to the podium, please say your name and your address, and we're using this little stopwatch that gives you four minutes, but if you have a couple lines left, I'm not going to cut you off. It just allows us to keep a format in place so that everybody is treated the same way. So the person who is first on the list is John Youngbluth from -- so come on up, John. I think you've been here before.
I have.
Thank you. We appreciate that, too. We like my lonesies.
Good evening. My name is John Youngbluth. I live at 1704 Pine Park Drive here in Eau Claire. I am co-president of the Memorial High School Choir Booster Club, and the primary reason I'm here is to invite all of you to the biggest event of next school year. On February 4th, over 1,000 students will be participating at Winterfest, which is the 25th annual show choir competition. We'll have over 1,000 kids there participating. They start at 8:00 in the morning, and by the time we get out of there, it's way too late, but it typically goes till 10:30 or 11:00. By the way, I know personally the backstage manager, so if you show up, he can get you in. All right? It is me. It is me. So it's a real key thing, and really important to the students, and unless you've experienced a show choir competition, you've not seen kids and the excitement that they show. It's like an athletic event, but instead of competing against each other, they're cheering for each other, which is really cool. So that was item number one. Item number two, I wanted to thank Principal Colup and administration. As you know, we lost our director this year, and they've done a great job of quickly finding what I think is a good hire. She has reached out to us. I know she's in the process of moving, but she has shared with us her excitement to join Memorial Choirs, so we're really excited about that, so we appreciate the administration. But last item, reminder, the program and the ensembles that exist are really designed at, I personally believe, 2 FTE level, bare minimum 1 1/2 FTE to make that program move effectively. And with one person in that program, I think we're setting that person up for potential failure and the potential for a continuance of the revolving door in that process. So that's all I wanted to share. I want to thank you for all of your service to the students and the community. We appreciate it, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person on the list is Jim Carker.
Good evening. My name is James Carker. My address is 3385 Whispering Pines Lane in Eau Claire. I am here once again to register my concern over the significant and disproportionate cuts to the vocal music program at Memorial High School. As the other co-president of the MHS Choir Boosters, I too represent many, but tonight I'll address you again as a parent, taxpayer, and concerned citizen. Budgets are tight, and it's a difficult task. I get it. It's a reason we vote and pay administrators. But why the disproportionate cuts in an academic program with demonstrated excellence and a long-term positive impact on students and the community? In this case, the harm far outweighs the overall benefit to the district. The program has suffered, and people need to know why. This is a local issue, and blaming Madison is not the answer. I am specifically concerned about how cuts have limited the students' educational experiences and resulted in an excessive turnover of directors. By the time classes resume, Memorial's Vocal Music Program will have seen five directors in the last eight years. The program is large, responsibilities are multifaceted, time commitments are significant, and there is a level of dedication not found in many academic or extracurricular areas. It is unreasonable and destructive to shift an ever-increasing workload onto a single teacher. The environment is ripe for burnout. I am grateful to pass directors for what they have accomplished in spite of what has been required. An analogy: we often take our vehicles for granted. If we don't fill the tank, change the oil, or make occasional repairs, the vehicle will break. If we are reckless or overload the vehicle, damage will occur and people will get hurt. Without maintenance and reasonable practices, we pay a very high price. Think of the choir directors as our vehicles. In the past, there were two vocal music teachers at Memorial High School. By eliminating half the teacher positions, our directors have been overloaded and driven too fast. Now is the time for the mechanics who budget to maintain our vehicle and follow the speed limit. Consider us the warning lights on the dashboard. It's time to make repairs. Do it for the students. I'm not asking for $3.9 million. When put in perspective, I'm not even asking for an extra teacher. I'm only asking that you restore what has already been taken away. Yes, we're facing a deficit, but have all other departments, programs, and administration experienced proportionate cuts. Are all other expenditures prudent? The potential damage to this specific program will far exceed its financial offset within the district. Disproportionate cuts are unfair to the students we serve and representative of wasted opportunity and potential. There are those who welcome a little controversy and unease when budgeting or to drive a request for additional funding. I trust that's not an issue here. Please determine the rationale behind these cuts, factor in fairness and equity, and communicate your findings. Memorial's choirs and ensembles have a reputation of excellence and accomplishment. Please don't let that change. Again, I respect you and thank you for your contributions to the district. Your consideration of my concerns is appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, James. Appreciate it. The third person on the list, Carol Craig. Welcome.
Did you punch the clock yet? Oh, good.
No, we're not going to punch till you start talking.
Well, I'm here for two reasons. One, to give you an update on RAVE. Some of you may remember what RAVE stands for: Register and Vote, Eau Claire. And in January of 2016, the board was supportive and passed a resolution in favor of RAVE, which allowed us to, volunteers in Eau Claire, a nonpartisan group, to work in various high schools to coordinate activities, to register students. And it has been extremely successful. It really has. So I thought I'd give you an update. We've registered over 400 citizens in the Eau Claire County, which is a lot when you consider the fact that the city clerk in this off-period time has registered less than 60. So we've been busy out there. And we haven't even hit the big presidential election that's going to be coming up. So we've registered a lot for primaries and for April elections, but the big presidential is going to be a big one. Of those 400, 255 were in our high schools. I think that's just so cool, and it's so exciting. Memorial, North, Augusta, Altoona, Fall Creek, and assuming that we will get your continued support, we're going to add McKinley on as one of the high schools that we want to do some registering on. So we're really looking at trying to continue the civic energy that's going on from the resolution that you passed. A little aside, some of the students at the high schools decided that they really wanted to become more involved. They went down to the city clerk, became special deputy registrars, and began the process right within the high schools of registering their fellow colleagues. And we'll be continuing on that journey, long past the time that we went down to Memorial and North for the registration. We had probably over 45 kids -- I shouldn't say kids. They're really young adults, young adults that helped facilitate the process and get their fellow students to the registration tables and get them registered and to learn the process. So we will be doing it again, we hope, with your support in September and October. The state law doesn't allow us to register anyone after October 12th. It has to be like two weeks before the next election date, but we will work closely with your staff, as we did before. It was really staff-driven, student-driven, so we're hoping for that continued support. All in all, it really was a very successful partnership between the community and the public schools, and we really do look forward to continuing this initiative. I only have 1 minute and 12 seconds left, but related to really effective and important community partnerships between the school district and the community, the referendum is really one of those critically important partnerships that I know you're going to be discussing this evening. And all things aside, for 20 years, we have had limited resources by law. 20 years. And it's eroded, in all due respect, it's eroded our middle-class families' wages. It's eroded our staff morale. It's had this eroding effect. For two decades, they've been told to do more with less. I mean, your analogy about the car is pretty cool, but that's 20 years of staff, administrators, students trying to do more with less, and it's really eroded innovation. And I know that on your agenda, you're going to be talking about innovation, but it has eroded innovation, and I know our community is ready to stop the erosion. We can't depend on the state. And a referendum that really has a clear, concise, operational budget that addresses compensation, that addresses facilities, that addresses capital improvements, operational budgets are supposed to do that. And I will say that a clear, concise, operational budget that projects securities, dependability, and future solvency, this community will buy. And I think that by itself, given the history, is something that's really critically important, and it will be a community partnership with the district. So good luck with your discussion. I know that you've spent a lot of time and a lot of energy, and there are so many unknown variables, and it's not easy, but it is time to stop the erosion. It really is. So thank you.
Thanks, Carol. The fourth person on the list is Tammy Schmitz. Did I say that right?
You can.
Good.
Hi, I'm Tammy Schmitz, and my address is 3519 Parkside Circle. And I just wanted to come here and say that today I got to spend the most amazing day with about 100 kids, from rising first graders to sixth graders, at a thing called Camp Invention. And I am so happy to be able to talk about this just a little bit. I'm just going to tell you a little bit about Camp Invention for those of you who don't know about it. Camp Invention promotes an opportunity for inventive young minds to exercise their creativity and use their imagination in ways they don't normally get to do in the classroom. Program participants do not realize they're learning and developing new skills as they build prototypes, take a lot of things apart, explore different types of technology, and so much more. This is only possible because of a partnership that we've been able to create with the school district, and for that I'm here to say thank you. Those 100 kids would not have this opportunity if it wasn't for this partnership, and there's been a lot of people working on it. I'm not sure if I can say names or not, but I can look over at certain people, and that would be great. But I want to thank you very, very much for giving this opportunity. This program actually costs about $220 per student, but because of the partnership that we were built with the district, these kids are not having to pay that much, and the accessibility for them is so much more. We had a waiting list of 75 kids that wanted to get into this program, and we would love to be able to expand it next year. It's just a great program. The other thing that I'd like to do is also to invite you. On Thursday afternoon at 2:45 at Putnam Heights, we will be having our inventor showcase. It's not a real long time, but you'll be able to see some of the things that these amazing kids have been able to do. They work on it all by themselves. There isn't a lot of adult input. It's all the kids and what they can do with their minds, stuff that they don't get to do a lot in the classroom anymore, that we're able to bring back to them and really get them to love learning again. So again, I can't thank you enough for helping us to build this partnership. Thanks. And now I have to go and make about 1,000 water balloons, so I'm going to pop out, and I'm very sorry about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. Just so the water balloons aren't ready for us when we leave tonight. Okay. Thank you, everyone. That was nice to have four members of the community come and address the board tonight. I appreciate that. The first thing next is the Board and Administrative Report, so our superintendent's report. Dr. Harbeck?
Thank you. I'd like to review the calendar of events for the board over the next few weeks, and as I was looking at the agenda tonight, I see that the calendar has not been loaded for you into the agenda item detail. So I'm going to do this a little bit by memory and my own calendar, and if we miss something, we will certainly get you a copy of the calendar loaded tomorrow. On Thursday, July 21st, there will be a meeting of the Demo Trends and Facilities Committee here at the Administration Building at 4:30. On Wednesday, July 27th, there is an ESSA listening session with DPI at the Metropolis Resort, and that will be held from 1 until 4 p.m. Three administrators, Jim Schmidt, Director of Teaching and Learning, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Tim Lippam, Executive Director of Administration, and I have signed up to speak to the group. And we invite you to attend and also sign up to share your thoughts. On Monday, August 1st, there will be a meeting of Policy and Governance at the Administration Building at 8:45 a.m., and that will be followed later in the evening by the regular meeting of the board, and that will be held at 7 p.m. here at the Administration Building. On Tuesday, August 2nd, the Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation will meet at noon at Whippley, and we have a representative from the board that will be attending that along with me. On Monday through Thursday, August 8th through 11th, there is an administrative retreat. The first two days will be attended by newly-appointed principals or principals who have been appointed since our last administrative training. And then on the 10th and 11th, we will have a full administrative retreat with all of our administrators and executive directors and directors, and that will be our kickoff for the year. And certainly, if board members would like to stop by, have lunch or breakfast with us, we would welcome you, and we'll get those times and places to you. On Monday, August 15th, there will be a board meeting at 7 p.m. in the Administration Building, and that is also the day of new teacher orientation at North High School. And traditionally, board members who are available have joined us there for lunch, so we will welcome you to that as well, and we'll send you out the logistics of that. You will find at your seats a folder, I think it's a red folder, and in that folder are a number of written reports that we are required to give to you annually, such as restraint and seclusion, a report on the nurses' work. So there are a number of reports there for you, as well as some information that you asked for regarding the student engagement survey. And lastly, I would like to thank the board for allowing me to attend the annual meeting of the Urban Superintendent's Association, which is held each year. It is a national organization of urban superintendents. There are 125 members. I am a vice president of the organization, one of the vice presidents. We met this year in Annapolis, and the theme of the conference was about innovation and change. And I have to tell you that it was quite a moving experience. Annapolis is a city that is filled with history and is kind of a center of education. We toured the Maryland State House, and we saw documents that George Washington had signed. We saw replica of the Declaration of Independence, and we're given some history on why the signers from Maryland chose to sign that at great risk to themselves. A lot of information about the founding of our country, and that was followed by a tour. We always tour schools, and this year, we toured the Naval Academy. And it was a very moving experience to see not only the training that's going on for our young people who are enrolled at the Naval Academy, but also to kind of witness the sacrifice, the ultimate sacrifice, that people have made to preserve our freedom and our liberty. And as we debriefed through our sessions, a theme kept coming up about the role that public education plays in preserving our freedom, and the fact that 90% of students in the United States attend public schools, and that without the public schools, you know, where would we be as a nation? And without strengthening our public schools and without, you know, providing the resources that our students need, are we risking our freedom? And would we have some of the situations that we have now if we had a stronger public school system? So that was a theme that kept coming through in any of the innovations that we discussed, in any of the trends that we're seeing in education, and it was a very, very moving experience, and I'm deeply grateful to you for allowing me to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harbeck. I will follow that wonderful report up with the presidency report. I don't think mine's quite as moving. I just want to let everybody know that recently, this past Saturday, several board members got up very early and traveled to Green Bay to participate in the WASBE Wisconsin Association of School Boards Summer Leadership Institute training. Some of the things that we covered while we were there were fundamentals of Wisconsin school finance, legal and policymaking duties of Wisconsin school boards, they were effective board superintendent teams, engagement, equity, and excellence. That was put on by --
Green Bay.
Green Bay. Thank you. Joe, he's my memory. He helps my memory. How to manage your processes so they don't manage you. That was put on by Peewaki, I think, and Legislative Update and Visioning, we ended the day with. So we had enough of the board members there that we had to notice those of us that went, and it was nice to go together and do that. Also, there's some things that we followed up. As you're aware, as board members and superintendent, we are doing some one-on-ones with our legislators and having them personally get to know our budget and ask their questions so that we can connect them stronger to our district. Follow-up to Senator Moulton, he had a question about the fact that we had increases in our free and reduced data related to poverty, and he had a question that he thought that maybe it was because we had redefined the levels as to which kids qualified for that. So we were able to put our data together to let him know that those levels and that data has not changed in 10 years, and we did submit that information to him. We also met, and Joe, you can be more specific on this, but we did meet with Representative Bernier, Joe and I did, for a two-and-a-half-hour conversation with her as well. And because as a legislator, she's not served on any education committees, you know, when you have a dialogue with someone, you kind of learn a different perspective, or you kind of learn why things can be the way they are. And we shared our information that we used for the referendum and the fact that Eau Claire receives $350-plus less than the state average per pupil, and she was really not aware of that and remarked that maybe they legislatively should bring all districts up to at least the state average. Now, I don't know how you would do that, but her perspective or input allowed us to have that insight. And Joe's probably going to be a little bit more specific about that in his legislative report. Also, as a board, we are continuing to connect with our community staff and superintendent, all of us are, to keep those lines of communication open. That was part of what came out of our systems assessment, and so we're really working hard on keeping our connection together and with Mary Ann. So we are going to continue to set up one-on-ones with our legislators so they can get up close and personal with our budget. I think that's meaningful. And Kathleen Vineout scheduled for the end of August, and we still need to schedule Dana, Wachs, and Warren Petrick. This is another thing, too, that we just recently started. The SOUPs, board presidents and vice presidents are setting up consistent meetings so that we can strategize for public education in the Chippewa Valley. So that's the SOUPs, the vice presidents, and the presidents from Altoona, Chippewa, and Eau Claire, because we feel that by doing this, our voices will be bigger, stronger, and we can work on that together. And then I want you to watch for an increased presence of Tony Evers in the western region of Wisconsin, working with the Action Collaboration in town, or the western region, on educating everyone. Now, it's kind of a time for us to really get the fair funding formula out there and have that conversation, and that's Tony's baby. He kicked it off here, as I've said before, way back in 2011, I think it was, and it's time now to dust that off and let people know what that is. So we're working on that. And then I got a call tonight from our newest member. He's supposed to be over there. He's in England, so he was seven hours, I think it was 10:30 at night. He was sicker than a dog, but I want you to know, he's probably live streaming and watching this. Their family, his wife Liz is from England, and so they go back to see family every year around this time. So I promised to tell everybody where he is and that as he is in England for an extended period of time here, we are going to work for next time to have him Skyped or FaceTimed in so that he will be here in face, too. So we're working on that. One more thing, you will note that the board will have more work sessions now up until the time of the referendum, so I want you to be aware of those. They're going to be built-in. Watch for them. Community can come and listen to our work sessions, and we like to have the community involvement. And as a board, I have two thank-you notes here that came through, and so I will pass them around. One is a thank-you note from John Stedman's family, and the other one is a thank-you note from a staff person about the retirement dinner. So just wanted you to know that. And that's the end of my report. I always forget I'm the one in charge here. I've got to sit and let somebody else do the agenda, so I'll leave my mic on. Now we get to the other reports that we have, and some of them are the board committee reports. So I have Policy and Governance. Who has this? Do we have any other committee reports besides that one?
Shared Services.
Oh. Catherine, you're doing that one? Shared Services Commission? Okay. Commissioner Dux, thank you.
Thank you. The Shared Services Commission, Joint Services of City, County, and School Board, met on June 30th, and we had not met all spring for various reasons, trying to get together. But we did a review of the dashboard and where we are on services, had some good discussion. The review was done by the county administrator, Catherine Schaff, and by, oh, city, Dale Peters. I was elected vice chair of the group. I was elected vice chair of the group.
Thank you. That's nice representation of the board. Thanks, Catherine. You're welcome. Joe?
Yeah, I'll just share for demographics and trends. We met on June 16th. We're going to be meeting again this week on the 21st here at the board office. We do have new board, new committee members, I should say, committee nominees, that the committee put together a list, gave the list to you. It's on the agenda tonight for you all to see. We had an amazing response of folks in the community. So I want to, again, thank everyone that had applied to serve. And we're going to start doing a lot of what the city does where they have a citizen resource bank. They have a working database of citizens that have reached out and said, "I'm willing to serve. I'm willing to step up." So we can plug them in wherever we can. We have plenty of committees and plenty of initiatives here. So at our last meeting, we, and I'm happy to pass it on to any board member, the minutes or some pieces from our informal discussion, but we also discussed McKinley Charter School and some renovation cost estimates. We looked at some blueprints. We looked at some line items and spoke with Larry about that, and Pete was there as well, and also Carolyn representing the McKinley Governance Board. So like I said, next meeting is the 21st. You're all welcome to attend. I can send you more information if you'd like.
Thanks, Joe. I think that just leaves policy and governance, right? And I'll fill you in on that one. We met this morning. We've been working on embedding the human trafficking into our policy 454. And so we worked diligently on that this morning. We have lots of questions and input that we need from our administrative team, and so the policy will be brought back on August 1st or the August 15th for us to continue to work on. And then, we also worked on policy 447.3, suspension and expulsion. And that one's still in the works as well, but I think we're hoping to bring that back to the, for board approval, August 1st or the August 15th board meeting as well. Okay? And that's the end of the Policy and Governance Committee report. So that takes us to our legislative update. Joe Luganbill, or Commissioner Luganbill, I need to say it that way, sorry.
Hello, everyone. I should add, too, I want to publicly thank, following up from the PNG discussion about human trafficking, Chris and I met with Fierce Freedom, Jody Emerson with them, and with Ben Frederick, who's with the Police Department, and they've been helping us with this process. So that's been a really valuable asset for us. So for the legislative report tonight, what got on all the headlines on July 1, as it does every year, is the information on state aid. So what information we do have, and it'll change, but it looks like more than half of Wisconsin public school districts will receive an increase in their general aid in the 2016-17 school year. Of the state's 424 school districts, 260 are estimated to receive more general aid, while 162 are expected to receive less aid. So this is a result of over $100 million bump in state general aid and other factors, property valuation, enrollment, shared costs in the general equalization aid formula. So that all impacts whether that estimate increases or decreases for a district. It's important to note that the amount of state aid a district receives does not affect how much the district can spend. And as has already been alluded to tonight, this is controlled by the state-imposed revenue limit. So at a given per pupil level, an increase in state aid means less property tax can be levied and vice versa. So the work continues, and many of us will continue to promote and advocate for a fair funding formula at the state level to help stop the erosion that our former board president was talking about. One piece I wanted to mention tonight as legislative chair that is actually at the national level but really relates to us locally, we've seen a lot of sad, awful, gut-wrenching news on the headlines over the last few months, and communities that have been torn apart with a lot of unrest. And I just wanted to share, the president last year had what he called the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, and talking about community policing, building trust and legitimacy, policy and oversight, community policing, the relationship with education. And in looking at it, it was actually really interesting. We have a real role to play in it. In terms of education stakeholders, they really ask that we, and I don't think it was ever really shared with our district in any way, so I just wanted to bring it to our attention. They ask that we review the use of school resource officers, examine policies to ensure that the use of school resource officers is not increasing the school-to-prison pipeline, but providing effective alternatives to incarceration through constructive interventions. They also recommend school districts collect data to monitor the use of school disciplinary practices, detentions, and expulsions, including demographic data on students and the nature of the offenses to develop more youth development appropriate strategies. And then the piece which I saw it, and I thought, yes, we're on track with this one, is they talk about reviewing school district policies and practices and advocate for early intervention and restorative strategies that minimize involvement of youth in the criminal justice system. So right now, we're looking at a policy, looking at the restorative programming that we'll be talking about as a board in the coming months. So it looks like we're on track on some of these, and maybe just have to be looking at some of these. And then, what else? We did meet with Representative Bernier at Randy's. The pudding was great. We are, we're following up with her office. We're setting up a meeting with her and a representative from DPI in the coming months, actually, hopefully, in the next month or two, to discuss possible solutions to the funding formula. She did seem to show interest. She added, which was really interesting and sad to me, that in all of her time in Madison, she's never once had someone from DPI come to her office and talk to her, and she's never had someone from DPI reach out to her. And even though she isn't on an education committee, I feel like that should be something that they are doing with every elected rep, whatever committee assignments they're on, because they're all there in the caucuses, writing this legislation, debating it. So it's important that we set up that connection and get that resource for her, and I'll look forward to being at that meeting, and I think Chris will, too. So I was going to talk about the summer leadership piece that we just had, but I think you covered that.
Thanks, Commissioner Luganbill. And that moves us on to the consent resolution agenda. We consider the approval of the consent resolution agenda items. We've been furnished with background material on each of them. We've done our reading prior to the meeting. And so I will move to approval to the list. If you have any questions or about any of them, board members, you can pull, and we can have that discussion then. So I would entertain, and I'm not going to do, I will entertain a motion for each one tonight. I think I'll do it quickly and just, I'd entertain a motion to approve the following. The minutes from June 20th, 2016, gifts in the amount of $50,943.21 for the period of June 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2016. Payment of bills in the amount of $8,969,858.36, and a net payroll in the amount of $3,317,821.20 for the period of June 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2016. The Human Resources Employment Report. The Additional Notice Requirements and Actions for School Districts Due to 2015 Wisconsin Act 55, 2015-17 State Budget. And the approval of the AGR contract, which is the contract that is now in place instead of our Sage contract. Right?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent resolution agenda without any pulling of anything. We don't have that happen very often, so thanks, everyone. So that moves us on to our individually considered resolution.
I'm sorry, Chris. We have to vote on that.
Sorry, can you do a roll call vote? That was a lot of money I read, so we need to do a roll call, but I forget that. Thanks.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Barstudd?
Yes.
Commissioner Duax?
Yes.
Commissioner Fager?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach-Boil?
Yes. Phew. So I can go on to the individually considered resolutions, and we only have one tonight. That's the board committee assignments. Would someone want to move that to floor?
So moved.
Commissioner Vu moved it. Does someone want a second, please?
Second.
And Commissioner Luganbill, second. Is there any discussion? Can we take a roll call vote on that, too, please? Can I just say something here quick? Right? The board committee assignments tonight, which was specified in our packet, was Aaron Harder, our new board member, will be, is assigned to, his two favorite committees were the two that Rich was on. So it was a quick fix. So he is going to sit on Budget Development Committee and on the LEAP, our Learning Environments and Programming Committee. And then the other board committee assignments were the one Joe talked about, about the people that have volunteered to step forward to serve on the demographic and trans committee. And if you want to see who they are, you can get into Board Docs and see the list. Okay? Okay, now we can take a roll call.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Barstudd?
Yes.
Commissioner Duax?
Yes.
Commissioner Fager?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach-Boil?
Yes. And so that moves us on to adjourn to our committee reports and items for discussion. And I will be reminded that at the conclusion of each one of these, we will take input from the audience. So that's nice to have that up there. Okay. So the first one is the Family Climate Survey. And Michelle, thank you for being here tonight to do this.
Yes.
Michelle, will you do me a favor, too? Would you introduce yourself and then give your role so that people in the audience and people listening know who you are? Okay?
Okay. Good evening. I am Michelle Ragke, and I am the Director of Assessment for the School District, and I am here to communicate the results for the 2015-16 Family Climate Survey. To give you a little overview of the survey topics, the topics covered in the survey were academic preparation, student support, school leadership, family engagement, safety and behavior, school operations, and the school calendar. To give you a couple technical notes about the survey, the Eau Claire area school district parents were informed about the Family Climate Survey via the newspaper, letters, phone scripts, and social media posts. K-12, they were the ones that emailed the invitations with unique survey links to the parents, and the survey was open from April 5th to the 27th. K-12, they sent reminders on April 10th, the 16th, the 19th, the 21st, and the 23rd. If parents did not have access to the internet, paper surveys were available upon request at all of our schools and at the district office. The survey was also translated in Spanish and Mung. We also went one step farther, and we had our BEAs. They reached out to Spanish and Mung families at each of our schools to help them work through the survey so that we could get their responses also.
Michelle, can you say what BEAs are?
Our bilingual educational assistance.
Thank you.
Yep. The results do not reflect random sampling. An example of random sampling was the Springstead survey that was done for the referendum. This was not a random sampling survey. So therefore, we cannot generalize our findings to all ECASD parents. Our results reflect only the perceptions and opinions of those that participated. The findings for each item in the report exclude participants who did not answer the questions. So on many of the questions, all of the questions, you will see an N-value. And the N-value is the number of participants for that question. It changes every question. You will see a different N-value. And if there is not a label, that means that it was 5% or less for that question. And some of them don't add up to 100%, and that is because of rounding. So how many participants did we have? Our survey results have gone up in the past for, from 2012 to 2015. We did see a decline this year, and we had 2,123 participants for this survey. The survey ranged, if we look and we just segregate that data of who participated, the survey results, there was 3% to 7% was the range for each of the grade levels, and most of our participants had more than one student at a grade level within a school. And so that was 18%. The majority of our respondents in this 2,100, they were English-speaking, with about accumulation of 5% being, have the language spoken at home other than English. Our overall perception data, our goal for our perception data is always 80% or more, and we have exceeded that in the 2016 school year. The 2016, those that were responding, the educational quality of an A or B was at 84%. And that remained constant from 2015, and that increased from 2014. If we compare that same data to the Springstead data that we saw in May, in the Springstead data, which was a random sampling, they represented 75% gave an A or a B. And if we take that on a national level, from the Pi Delta, Kappa Gallup participants, 55% responded an A or a B from their schools. So we're doing really well. Academic preparation is, was the first category, and that falls under our Academic Services Department. One of the board's goals is to use research-based practices with students. Some of the research that has informed our work is John Hattie, Robert Marzano, Michael Schmoker, Thomas Guskay, and Ken O'Connor are just a number of few that we have used in our research strategies. As we look at the data for academic preparation, John Hattie, educational researcher, spent more than 15 years researching the influences on achievement of K-12 children. Through this research, he linked student outcomes to several highly effective classroom practices. One of the practices that proved to have positive impacts on student learning included teacher clarity. This is when a teacher begins a new unit of study or project with students, and he or she clarifies the purpose and learning goals, and provides explicit criteria on how students can be successful. If we look at the first two questions, these relate to that research that was done on teacher clarity, and we are above the 80% mark for both of those areas. If we look the other, the bottom two, those are responding to effective educational or effective instructional strategies that are happening in the classroom. And those two also on the bottom were above our 80% goal.
Michelle, before I forget, I would like to request to see all of this broken down by race, if it's available.
Okay.
Because I think, especially since we see the student engagement numbers, what they are with students of color, I'd be interested to see the family engagement on some of these families of color.
And I'll have to get back to you if K-12 can give us that data. Yes, I'll get back to you with that one, if we can. Through Hattie's research, he has also linked feedback to increasing student achievement. He says that learners need to know they are moving forward with steady, consistent feedback. The first questions on this slide refer to feedback to students and family. When looking at the questions asked in academic preparation in this area, these three are, fall a little short of the 80% goal. One of the things that I want you to take a look at on these slides, do you see that light green color? Those are the don't knows. And so in some slides, that is going to be very apparent, in some slides, it's going to be very narrow. But I do want you to make note of that, that we do have don't knows in many of these questions. Feedback is an area of improvement for our school next year. Teaching and learning will look, will work with principals on delivering professional development on how to give effective and timely feedback to students. So that's an area of improvement. Student support would be the second area. Student support falls under our Student Services Department. When one looks at the research, three school characteristics stand out as helping young people feel connected to school while simultaneously encouraging student achievement. That'd be high academic standards coupled with strong teacher support, an environment in which adult and student relationships are positive and respectful, and the third being a physically and emotionally safe school environment. The first two questions, we are above the 80% goal, and the third question, students in my schools are treated fairly, is below the 80% satisfaction at 79%. So just a little below. We are making progress in this area through our culturally relevant practices, but we still have work to do, especially in how students' discipline is managed.
Michelle? Thank you for adding the research with the survey. That's really meaningful. Thank you.
If we continue to look at student support, we have approximately, well, it is, 83% of our students of the parents that are families that responded. our students, of the parents that are families that responded, their students are involved in extracurricular activities. 60% are in athletic programs. And one that really stands out to me on the slide is the 81% of my child is excited to go to school. So a very positive for our students. This area, school leadership, is most interesting because it is an area where families, many of the families responded don't know. And so if you look at the don't know, it ranges from 19% to 42%. So there's a lot of area that we need to help, you know, inform our families about. There was not significant change in this category from last year to this year, but our goal of perception data is still 80%. In this category of school leadership, we fall short of the 80% goal. Because of this, it has been identified as a focus area for the 2016-17 school year. Two years ago, principals participated in a workshop called Balanced Leadership. Principals will again participate in this focused professional development in August. The focus of this time will be based around the extensive research McRae has done on leadership and has identified leadership responsibilities that have statistically significant correlations to student achievement. This is an area where we can also strengthen the communication between school and home to help families weigh in on this topic. So parents were also asked if they had an issue or a concern to discuss with their principal. Out of the 1,800 respondents of this question, only 17% did have an issue or a concern. Those 17%, then were asked another question, and this is where, these are the responses from that 17%. So you see your N values have dropped dramatically. So if we look here, the responses were positive for if parents or guardians did have an issue or concern. Most of these were above the 80% goal. We did see that, so there was a slight job drop, and he or she was courteous and listened to your concerns from last year, and he or she resolved your concerns. That fell below the 80% goal. The next area is family engagement. Parents and teachers have a common goal: to facilitate the best educational experience possible for students. Research has proven the importance for teachers and parents to have meaningful communication with one another because doing so increases parental engagement in student learning. Parental engagement is associated with higher academic achievement, increased attendance rates, positive student attitudes and behaviors, increased student readiness and an interest in their work, and increased parent satisfaction. We achieved 80% of our goal on each of these questions. If we look at the top three here, we achieved our 80%, but an area that we still is a challenge for us are the bottom two questions. It was a challenge last year and it continues to be a challenge this year, but what I would like to tell you is that we are making gains in this area. So I feel welcome to use my facility in my child's school. We've done some changes in that area, and we saw an improvement. Last year, it was 38%, and this year, we're reporting 41% satisfaction. And if we look at, I understand, the process for requesting to use facilities, last year it was at 33%, and it jumped up to 36% this year. So we're making gains in that area. Research shows that parental engagement in education has increased over the past 25 years, but engaging parents continues to be a hurdle for many schools. If you look on ours, on the left-hand side, 69% of our respondents volunteer in our schools, and on the right side, you can see in what capacity they are volunteering. So the most common would be field trips, school-wide carnivals or fundraisers, and then down to class parties. The next category was safety and behavior. In the work of Robert Marzano, he has five factors of school effectiveness, and one of the five is to provide a safe and orderly environment. He states if teachers and students do not feel safe, they will not have the necessary psychological energy for teaching and learning. Evidence suggests that safety in schools is a major concern of parents. Three of these areas had over 20% of the respondents who chose don't know for an answer to the question. So if you, you can see those, 22, 23, and 22, and that would be discipline, gang activity, and weapons. But, so, and those two, what I do want to point out here is the very top one. My child is safe at school. That had a 92% satisfaction rate. If we move on to the next three questions of safety and behavior, students do not threaten or bully each other at our school. Satisfaction, people who agreed with that were 47%. You'll see that the don't know, again, big numbers, 22% are don't know. Alcohol use is at 64%, with 24% not knowing. And then drug use is not a problem, is at 61%, with 23% not knowing.
Have you had a discussion on how we can inform our communities and families better?
We have seen it as an opportunity. We haven't had strategic conversations around it yet.
Okay, no, that makes sense, yeah.
But moving forward, those are things that we need to really look at.
Okay.
To help inform them. The next category was school operations. A couple of point, items to point out here are in the areas that we're working hard on over the last couple of years. One is our technology area, and if you look way at the top, my child has access to technology at school for learning purposes. We're at 92% in agreement. And then if you look at, an area we continue to work on is high-quality food, is at 59%. And so that, we saw a slight increase in that area from last year to this year. It increased from 56% to 59% in the food area. For bus transportation, overall, our community, or the respondents were pretty happy with the bus transportation, all way above the 80% goal. If we look at the satisfaction with the school calendar, 88% who responded said they were very satisfied with the new school calendar. They were completely satisfied or satisfied with the school calendar. That's a good move. On the timeline for this, and then start, our start time and end time committee, they asked for the input of families, and this was an avenue to get input. As the results came available, we are now reporting on this data. And so if we look at the school day start time and end times, 72% say that it does work for their family. And if we move over to when would they prefer to have this implemented, 48% said that they preferred to keep the current start and end times, and if we did change, 43 said they preferred to change it in the 2017-18 school year. Equitable funding. This is, I want you to take note at the big light green area in the middle. 58% is don't know, and so they're not, they don't know how our funds are distributed amongst our 20 schools. So if we look though at this, we have 26% that agree that they're distributed equitably, and then we have 17% that they disagree. So there's a, our majority is in the don't know section. How are our families receiving information? Our families, once again, they say that their top information source is email, followed by the school newsletter, and then the child being the third source of information. So that was a lot of data. Some of our key findings as we work through here, the very first one, the number of respondents who rated the overall educational quality of their school, child's school as an A or a B remained at 84% from 2014-15 to 2015-16. The number of respondents who rated the overall educational quality of their child's school as an A increased 5% from the 2014 school year. Then even in bold, you'll see the ones that really stuck out for the ones that were above the 80%. The majority of respondents, 91%, rated their schools as safe. The majority of respondents, 92%, feel welcome at their child's school. The majority of respondents are satisfied with the new school calendar. And then we start moving down on ones that are below our 80% goal. The majority of respondents agree the principal advocates for my school, our district, and public education. The majority of respondents agree the principal is fair and consistent when enforcing school rules. And the majority of respondents do not know how district funds are distributed amongst schools. And the majority of respondents feel welcome to use facilities at my child's school. Themes. And these themes were taken from the open-ended comments and the themes that were identified through the survey. So, parents or respondents wanted more rigorous and challenging curriculum at all levels, timely feedback to students about their progress during the school year, more information about how they can help their students at home, more information about how to use the ECASD facilities, increase after-school access to school facilities such as library, computers, gym, track, and/or swimming pools, improve the quality of the school lunch, increase diversity among staff, provide more opportunities to communicate with school principals, and provide training for school principals on conflict management.
Any questions from board members for Michelle? No, thank you. Anyone from our audience would like to have, address the board or have, make a comment? Come on up, you have to state, come up to the mic, state your name and address. He's sorry, but you got to do that.
Megan Snow, 2729 K Street. I was just wondering, and maybe I missed it, was there a percentage of our families that responded?
So there was 2,100 families that responded, but they could have more than one student in...
So then if you took it by student, so if each student represented a response, was there a percentage that the respondents?
Every family may not, may represent more than one student.
I know, so if you took it by just a student as a response?
It'd be about 25%.
So only 25%? Okay.
Carol Craig, 891 Black Oak. That, I had a similar question. Do we know how many families actually are registered in our school district?
We...
That seems to be an important consideration if we have 5,000 families, or 6,000, or 7,000.
We presented to the board on that, Carol, and we serve 11,000, approximately 200 kids, but it covers about 7,800 families. I think that's what we, I mean, don't quote me, but it's around that.
So if it's 7,800 families, these results actually reflect 20% of the families, which...
Well, it would actually, it would actually be upper 40s then, just 2,100 of 7,800. I would have to do the calculations for you.
I did already, so, so, well, I guess my point, and I think what struck me about that was the homework where they said over 80% of the parents are helping with homework. And I just go, that's, that's very difficult to comprehend. So if you had 7,800 families and, on average, 2,000 respondents, because I was looking at the ends, that is probably 20, 25%. So 75%, we really don't know how they're responding. And I think that's a concern for those parents who are disengaged and dysfunctional and not really able to communicate. So I'm hoping there's a way of communicating with that too.
I think the converse, can I, I think the conversation we've had is this is, we use the multiple measures. So this really is just one measure that we use when we're looking at how we can do better with our school district. But you're right, I mean, certainly that is not the major portion of our families. Yep. We're aware of that.
And if we're all, if we're raised to target to, to, or we pass?
My question, I guess I have a couple, but I'll just do one. The, with our families in poverty, with our homeless families, have we had any sort of strategies and family services to specifically target those families?
No, and that's something that we can work on in the future, working with Danny Clotkin, you know, helping, having her work with those families to do that.
Yeah, I think that's an important, I mean, they're so, that's such a vulnerable population, and I think it'd be interesting to see there.
John Young Blue, 1704 Pine Park Drive. Thank you for doing this. This is important. Hopefully, we can continue to increase the number of people that participate. I did it for our family last year, my wife did it for our family this year, to get a little different feel. The only thing that I would ask is that you put a save button when you take surveys, and I don't think it was there. When you take surveys, you get partway through, you get a phone call, she, this actually happened, she was three-quarters of the way through, got a phone call, came back, and it timed out on her. So she had to start all over again. I don't know if she did or not, I think she did, but a save button in the middle might be nice.
Very good suggestion. Commissioner Fager?
Yeah. As somebody who does this kind of work for a living, I think that we need to commend you and your team on getting such a high response rate back because typical survey results are not much higher than what we received. In fact, you exceeded the typical, typical survey results. So I think, again, this is perception, not reality necessarily. So, but I think you certainly do deserve some commendation for doing the work that it took to get this high, high of a response rate.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vu?
Thank you. Help clarify this if my question is not framed the right way. In what way does the purpose of this Family Climate Survey is designed to align with the family core value? Or are they completely different things?
The family core values?
The Eau Claire School District core value.
Our strategic plan. Well, it goes, you know, a lot with academic achievement, it, collaboration, it, what am I?
Community.
High-quality staff, community involvement, a lot, many of these correlate or coincide with our strategic plan.
A follow-up question for the board and administrator. At what point do we find, and how do we find if our core value are being exhibit in the district, and to what extent?
So, can I, yes. So, in reference to the survey and some of the questions that were asked, are there descriptors within the survey that would directly relate to our core values that we could use to measure, or that we could use as an indicator? Is that...
Yeah, and with multiple measures, I think we could make a correlation chart for you of where they correlate with which strategic priority. Would that help?
I think as a board, we're getting deeper into the conversation of the systems assessment, the strategic plan, and aligning everything we do with what we have pulled out as goals and indicators for that. So that's why we're asking, yep.
And so I can do that for you.
Anyone else that I'm missing? Okay, anyone else from the audience? Thank you. Thanks, Michelle, for your hard work. The next thing on our agenda is, committee report is our superintendent, and she is going to bring forth an update on the goals aligned with our strategic plan. So that actually was a really good segue, Charles.
So as we begin to talk about where we are on our goals as a district, and also how my goals relate to your goals on the strategic plan, last April, we took some time as a superintendent board team to look at our goals and trying to create an understanding of the differentiation between the role of the superintendent and the role of the board, and looking at your goals as aspirational for the district, and looking at my goals as how to make those goals operational. And our strategic plan helps us to do that by articulating what your aspirational goals are and what the five priorities are. are, and what the five priority areas are to achieve those goals, and the actions that we will take. Now, this is not an update on the strategic plan, but this is an update on where we are in terms of moving that strategic plan along, and also moving your goals along. So, one of the things that we talk about in terms of the strategic plan is the first goal. And your goal about educating the whole child using multiple measures to assess academic achievement and social-emotional growth that are characteristic of successful adults translates operationally to focus instruction across the whole, all of the schools with the whole-child approach. And, you know, our goal is to prepare all students for post-secondary success, so that students are college and career-ready, achievement gaps are closing, and graduates recognize behaviors characteristic of successful adults. And I would say develop those kinds of characteristics. So, when we're looking at how we measure that, we depend on a number of assessments that take place both at the school level, and also at the district level, and also at the state and national level. So, typically, our indicators for academic success, for post-secondary success have focused on these three areas, and you've seen this before. But how do we talk about this at the school level and through the school improvement planning process? So, if you look at the district process, or progress in third grade reading, English Language Arts, which is our reading goal, you can see that at the district level, what our rate is of proficiency. And we've made quite a bit of growth in this area, not as much growth as we would like to make, because we're striving to get to that 80% through our universal instruction. But how do we measure up against other schools that are similar to ours, like the UW school communities, large school districts across the state, and then the state average itself? This is really helpful at the district level in terms of our getting kind of a big picture of how we're stacking up. When we look at that progress in ELA, and we're talking at the school level, we try to give a school like Meadowview an idea of what their progress has been in that area of proficiency, how that progress compares to what's happening across the district, and then across the state. We see this as being helpful to, at the school level.
Can I ask a question? So, the district is the average, and the state is the average?
Yes.
Okay.
And what's in blue is the average in proficiency, and what's in red are those that are non-proficient.
Commissioner Ludenfield?
Did you say this is last year's numbers?
These are last year's numbers. This is always kind of an odd time to give you an update on our achievement data, because much of it is embargoed or has not yet been released. But you'll be getting that information in the opening of Schools Report in October. So, these are for your information, not necessarily to show you progress, but to show you how we're communicating at the district level and with the schools, and what our multiple measures are. We look at eighth-grade math, and we see what the district progress is. We have quite a bit of work to do in this area in eighth-grade math, but you can see that so do other school divisions in this area.
I have a question, too, about the information for the board, if it could be disaggregated according to race as well, so that...
Yes, and you will see that in the opening of Schools Report.
Got it, yeah, we usually do, that's that.
This is, I guess I would say, this is for demonstration purposes only.
Yep, got it.
And again, you would see how this would be commuted at this, communicated, or will be communicated at the school level, giving the percentage of the school, for the district, and for the state. And I think this helps put some of the student achievement data in context for our teachers by showing these comparisons. We look at our district progress on the ACT, and this is going to be a very interesting one for us to follow, because 2013-14 was the first year in which the Eau Claire Area School District had given all students the opportunity to take the ACT. So, when we compare our data across this, our comparisons for the other school districts and for the state, keep in mind that across the state, students were still self-selecting to take the test. And we piloted this in the 2014-15. So, it'll be, I think, very interesting to see what happens when, now in 15-16, when everyone has had to take the test, and how we compare to that. So, again, this is a way for the, for us to communicate at the district level. And then at the school level, we'd look at a school like Memorial, compare them to the district, the state, and the national, so they would have a sense of how their students Now, along in, in kind of coordination with this multiple-measure approach, it's important that along the way, we're not just looking at in standardized tests, that we're also doing some progress monitoring. And we have some timelines for those with these following instruments. And all of these assessments are screeners, and they are used with other pieces of data to help teachers make decisions about how to address individual student achievement in their classrooms. So, this is where we kind of drill down to the individual student through these screeners. And these are administered throughout the year to get a sense of whether or not students are growing. And that has been our approach, not necessarily to hit standards, but to make sure that every student is experiencing growth in their instruction. Now, we've talked a little bit, I think you'll remember, we had a work session on how we would measure our social-emotional indicators. And at present, we're really focused on our culturally-relevant teaching practices. Some of the schools have used an approach where they have identified a number of culturally-relevant teaching practices. And as principals visit classrooms, they note which of those culturally-relevant practices are being used. Teachers talk about these in their PLCs. Sometimes there are reports given back to staff, depending on the school and the, and the principal's kind of leadership style, about how they're seeing the implementation of these culturally-relevant practices. But we also have a number of tools that we're using, and some of these we've talked about before, as we've talked about the indicators in our work sessions. We do use our PBIS system, we use some of these emotional screeners, and we do look at what students are telling us. I'm a very big believer that if you want to know what's going on with your students, ask them, because they will tell you. And unlike the family survey, where we really can't generalize to the experience of the student, of the, of the families because of the census and the 20% to 25% return rate, with our student engagement surveys, we get almost 100% participation. So, we can make some generalizations in terms of what they're telling us about their experiences, and how they perceive their social-emotional growth. I also want to talk to you a little bit about, I want to show you some artifacts that we've been using, that will kind of show you the work that teaching and learning has been doing. This is a, and you'd have to have like a really good eyesight to see this, but we'll get this loaded into Board Docs for you. But this kind of gives you an overview of some of the initiatives that are taking place now within the district. And some of them are focused on programming improvements, some of them are focused on professional development for staff, some of them have to do with creating dual enrollment opportunities, or having students earn college credit while they're in high school, and some of them are some of our community partnerships that we have. And so, this is one artifact of that. I want to move to Goal Two, which has to do with our collaborative, intentional, and engaging culture. And I think this is an area where the board has really asked for some significant change. This is a change in about how we do business, how we work with each other, how we access research to inform our practice. And I want to say that this is a process, it's not an event, it's something that is ongoing, because we're changing behaviors, and we're asking people to change the way they work with one another. And as we've used professional development as a means to promote research-based instructional leadership among administrators and teacher leaders, we try to build their capacity for teachers to collaborate with each other, to provide effective instruction, and to provide timely feedback to increase student achievement. Are we there yet? No, but we're making progress in those areas. We've put a great deal of effort into providing professional development, particularly for principals, to increase their capacity for instructional leadership. You know, I, I think when we look at the role of the principal, perhaps more than in any other area of education, the principal role has changed more over the past seven to eight to 10 years, in that it's moved from kind of an operational managerial position to one of being an instructional leader within the system. And we know from the research that McCrell has done, particularly Robert Marzano, that the most important phase or factor in a child's education is their teacher, and the second most important aspect of moving student achievement along is the principal. And so, we've put a lot of professional development, a lot of emphasis on that. We believe, at least I'll say I believe, that every child deserves a principal that is a strong instructional leader. And so, we've used our principal meetings to, most of the day, I would say probably 85% of the day is devoted to professional development for principals, to give them an opportunity to review data together, to have trainings together, and in some instances, to plan together. We've also used our school calendar as a means to promote more professional development for all of our staff, either through their PD IP days, or through the Wednesday PD trainings for teachers. Currently, elementary teachers are participating in a math institute led by Mary Richards. We have teachers doing professional coaching, or having professional coaching. We also have our principals, elementary principals, and our secondary principals receiving coaching through Solution Tree. And the superintendent is having coaching through WASTA. And as, as one of the people in the chamber said to me, you know, coaching's a good thing for people. Even Aaron Rodgers and LeBron James have coaches. So, you know, professional coaching, I do think benefits us in terms, particularly in terms of problem-solving, and learning to manage change. So, as part of this, we're going to, again, show you some artifacts. We created a strategic plan crosswalk to the systems assessment, and this came about as a way to communicate. We've been piloting some approaches to the implementation of our strategic plan. And one of our first initiatives was to develop a communications plan. So, a committee was formed, the committee did an assessment of district needs, and created an implementation plan for the communications plan. And this was one of the, one of the products that the communications committee, or members of the communications committee, put together as part of a communications plan. And I want to talk a little bit more about that as we go to Goal Three. So, as we had discussed earlier, we will be doing a work session with the board just on the implementation of the strategic plan, and so that will be coming to you. We talked a little bit about how the strategic plan was communicated in the spring through district updates, in the principal meetings. The Teaching and Learning Department spent a great deal of time kind of unpacking the strategic plan, and noting what strategies or programs were already in place, and what might be needed, what might be missing that would be needed to be implemented. We also discussed the strategic plan with the PAC. I talked about it in our PTA meetings. I think as board members have gone out to talk to the community about our referendum planning, the strategic plan has been shared with the community as a lar, at large. So, I think people are now beginning to understand we do have a strategic plan, and, and how we move forward with that. We've also been looking, and I want to share this with you, we've been looking at various models about how to govern and monitor the strategic plan, as well as to implement it. And we've talked to a number of districts across the state, such as Oshkosh, and La Crosse, and Chippewa Falls, who have recently implemented their strategic plans. We've also talked to some districts in Rockford, Illinois, in Chapel Hill, North Carolina, talked to a couple of districts in Texas who recently completed strategic plans, to get an idea of how it is, how do you keep this thing going? How do you monitor it? It's not just creating action plans, there has to be a governance structure for that. And we'll be presenting that to you in the work sessions that we have. One of the things that we had talked about was the idea of developing a consensus process. And this is an artifact for you of some work that the principals did with the directors and executive directors to find some common ground around their work with the district leadership professional learning communities. And Heidi White and Terry Gadel led us through this work, and these were the beliefs, actions, and norms, and benefits that the team agreed upon to help us guide how we would make decisions and how we would do our work.
When did, when was this done?
This was done in April and May, and finalized in June.
Okay, thank you.
Each of the building teams and buildings also have developed their norms. And this is an example of Locus Lane norms, and kind of their collective commitments to one another. And here's another example for you with Putnam Heights. And I think one of the things that you'll note is that it's not, one size doesn't fit all. And these are the commitments that have come through their PLC. And these are the commitments that have come through their PLCs and through their team norms to describe how they will work together and what processes they will follow or values that are important to them. So we come to Board Goal Three, and this is about strengthening the connections with the community to support students. And I think that, you know, my role is to help you to be effective in developing your relationships with each other, with our families and staff, and with the broader community, with the idea that, you know, people are finding that they do have confidence in our So we did, I want to come back to this district communications committee because this was our kind of first step. And I want to tell you that in the time that they formed in April 2016, they've gotten a lot accomplished. This is their norms about how they will work together. Just a chance to look at that a little bit. They created a plan where they did a needs assessment, and part of their needs assessment involved that idea of the ideal state. So they did, conducted interviews with other districts and through recommendations from professional organizations about best practices and things that were working in other places. And then they did a gap analysis to look to see what we were already doing in Eau Claire and what we needed to do. This is the components of their plan. And these are some strategies that they put forth.
I just need to mention the slogans up on the wall. It was new tonight when we walked in, so I just want to make sure everybody sees it over there.
To accompany our new vision and mission statement. So these are all things that they will, they will be working on over the next year. They've put together in that very short time a number of products for us. They did an artifact with their financial facts, and this was presented at the art show in May. We've used this document very extensively in the work to educate the community about the referendum and have gotten lots and lots of positive feedback about it. Recently, the Board President and Abby Johnson and I did a presentation for the chamber, and one of the ideas that we were, the communication committee was able to help us with was the idea of aligning or showing the chamber how our strategic plan aligns and supports their strategic plan. And one of the points that we made in that presentation to them is that we are not only building the foundation of the workforce and contributing to the lifestyle of the community, but that we're somewhat of an economic driver within the community. And I think the presentation that they helped to put, helped us to put together was very well received. So I'm going to stop now and ask you for your questions and your feedback, and we'll stop here for the time being.
Any thing from the Board?
I wanted to make one comment about Goal Three that wasn't really there, that I've been hearing as a Board member, is that more of our schools are doing home visits with families. We, you know, and that truly is a piece on connecting with families at a completely different level. So I think, I think it was, wasn't Flynn thinking about doing it? And Lake Shore's doing them, and I, I think there's a couple other schools that have, and it'd be neat for their feedback on culture changes within their schools once they connect with families across doorsteps.
You know, I'm glad that you brought that point up because there are a number of efforts going on across schools, and some of it relates to the surveying that we've been doing. You know, we heard in last year's survey that parents wanted more information about how they could assist their students at home. And to that end, some of the schools have school-based initiatives going on that are targeted specifically to their community. And I'll give you a couple of examples. Metaview has a program that they've done, they did last summer, and that they're repeating this summer, where they bring parents into the school during the summer for reading sessions with their students, and they have some professional development for parents about how they can help their students and support their students' early reading. And that has been received very well by the Metaview community. Lake Shore has revamped the way that they are doing parent conferences, incorporating a part of that parent conference as a way to show parents specifically how to help their students with homework or, you know, with learning targets, that kind of thing. So we're beginning to see more and more of that across the district as part of their school improvement planning process.
Commissioner Duett?
Well, I'm happy to hear about the district communication plan. I think that's was, it's, looks wonderful, and I'm looking forward to hearing more about that, and also the crosswalking with a strategic plan and all that together at a work session will be very valuable to us. Thank you.
Commissioner Vu?
First of all, thank you very much for giving us the best that you can and what you have. I'm just a little bit concerned that the pace that we are moving might be a little bit too slow to get the strategic plan off the ground because it was a big piece that was identified in the system assessment, that we lacked that piece that centralized our district together. And it's almost a year that we don't have action plan, and I know you said that you're looking at different models to help us put in place and implement through action plan. But I just want to express that it would be harder for the next time around to report if you don't have action plan, which are indicators, which are benchmark, so that's all.
So let me, let me address that in a couple of ways. In terms of the strategic plan with the academic piece, we had already implemented a school improvement planning process with key indicators for the schools and specifically targeted goals in academics in reading, math, student engagement, and then in an area which is very specific to each school. And we see that as a vehicle and an action plan that is very specific to each school community to move that academic and social emotional growth along. And we can, as we have our orientation, we can show you through a crosswalk how that's happening. So we feel that we've addressed those two priorities already very strongly, even though we have some more work to do with social emotional learning. In terms of our highly qualified staff, I want you to keep in mind that we just completed our compensation study and that our compensation plan, and in moving to that, that is a way to attract and to retain highly qualified staff. In one of the artifacts that I showed to you tonight, you would also see that we have plans in place to support teachers and highly qualified staff through mentoring programs, through all of our principals recently received training on what's called the PDP, which is a way to monitor their progress toward the renewal of their licenses, and also some plans in place to help support teachers who are interested in national board certification. So like I said, this is not a report on our progress on the strategic plan, this is more about our progress in terms of addressing our goals. So I think you, I think that you will see that we've made quite a bit of progress. One of the things that we tried to do with the communication committee is to use that as a pilot, to see what happens when you put a small work group together and then have them come back to a larger group and report out what they're doing and to see whether or not we think that's going to work. And that's a model that's been used very successfully across the nation. And then I would just make one more point, and that is through our reorganization, it was not, you know, because we did so much hiring internally for those leadership positions, we did not have our full team in place until April of 2016.
Commissioner Luganbill?
So you just mentioned the new team. I'm wondering if you can touch on the department restructures that have taken place, how that aligns with all of this, what the timeline and, oh, flow chart.
We were thinking that you might ask, ask about that and the organizational structure. And this is really about the leadership team across the district. And you'll see that the principals and the assistant principals in the schools really begin the work, that's where the work is. None of us in the central office would have a job if it were not for the schools and the work that's going on with the principals and the students. Then you have the Executive Director of Administration, and in that role, basically what you have is someone who is assisting with the administration of the schools, with the evaluation, helps me to evaluate principal performance, is in charge of safety and security of things that, issues that can't be resolved at the school level, and assisting the principals with those matters. We have the Executive Director of Human Resources, and you're very familiar with what she does in terms of trying to get and keep the best that we have. And that, that role really breaks out into two areas, recruitment and then also staff services, providing services to staff. Takes a very big role in the development of the employee handbook, in terms of helping with our EAP programs, with our wellness programs, with running all of the employee committees that we have that provide input for your work. And that comes under her direction. We have the Acting Director of Business, and her main function is to prepare and oversee the budget for the school district. And reporting to her is the Director of Buildings and Grounds and the Director of Food and Nutrition. And then we have the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, and those directors who report directly to him in terms of our curriculum, the delivery of instruction, and how we do our assessments. And so the Director of Academic Services oversees that curriculum piece and also those instructional practices. The Director of Assessment is charged with managing the achievement data and those multiple measures that you've asked for. The Director of Learning, our early learning, is not only in charge of our early learning school Prairie Ridge, but oversees all of our partnerships with our community childcare providers and coordinates the professional development for those areas. That is quite a large undertaking. We have the Director of Special Education, who is responsible for the identification of special education, students who might be in need of special education, for the development of their individual education plans, for overseeing and making sure that those plans are carried out as they're written, and for managing all of the requirements and regulations that are associated with special education. And then we have the Director of Student Services, which is a, had formerly been part of the Director of Special Education Student Services, that had been one role. And now we have a director who can oversee our counseling programs, our nursing programs, works with our social workers, makes sure that any student, kind of like I would say social emotional need, is, is under her leadership. And then finally, the Director of Technology, who is responsible for all of our technology needs. So that's how we break out.
Any questions from the Board? I guess not. Anybody from the audience? Come on up. State name, address.
Kelsey Morano, 1116 McLaughlin Avenue. You mentioned that there was 100% student participation in the student engagement survey, almost, okay. Because I know in like elementary school, it's only fifth grade participation.
I should have specified five through 12.
Five through 12, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we can go on the next item on the agenda. Thank you, Mary Ann. The next one is the presentation of the LEAP Committee Recommendations for the Sam Davy STEM Innovation Zone. Tim, you are our administrative liaison on this, so would you like to introduce what's going to happen next?
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you. President Hubbuck Boyle. As I was thinking of introducing, as the team gets ready, this is the Sam Davy team. And it's nice to see an entire team. This, this idea began with a small number of teachers. They vetted around what to do, what not to do, how to proceed, what, you know, what were the issues. Then it shrunk a little bit, and then all of a sudden the entire school decided to embrace this idea and move forward. And when we think about how does it fit in what they're doing, there were three things that occurred this evening that I thought were relevant and pertinent to this proposal. First off, as Dr. Haderbeck indicated, K for five, 12, student engagement surveys are done by nearly 100% of the grade five through 12 students. And consistent in there has been an identification of students looking for more relevant and engaging programming. We also saw that in our family survey tonight, in the presentation, that in fact challenging and rigorous programming was an idea or a need or an interest that the families who participated in that survey identified. And then lastly, it began with Ms. Schmitz, and she talked about camp invention, but all the interesting things that are going on that don't happen in a school, and gave the impression as if somehow that was impossible to occur in a classroom. What you're going to hear tonight, that perhaps that's not necessarily the case, and we can have an opportunity to look to develop and investigate some of that stuff at Sam Davy. So with that, Davy.
Thank you. I'm Bill Geezy, I'm the principal at Sam Davy, the proud principal. I have seven staff members with me here this evening. First of all, before I introduce them, I'd like to thank the Board for allowing us to present this evening, and the LEAP Committee for forwarding our proposal to you. So with me here tonight, Beth Doolman, fourth grade teacher, Kelsey Morano, third grade teacher, Erin McCracken, first grade teacher, and Kristin Buckholz, fifth grade teacher. In the audience, I'm just going to point out, we have TruVang, our Fayed teacher, Casey Otto, kindergarten teacher, and Stephanie Veerbicker, another third grade teacher. So this is a, Intech Great is a grassroots effort. For the last three years, we have been toying and working with this idea. Two years ago, our student engagement results were not where we thought they should be. And it became part of our school improvement plan to improve our student engagement at Sam Davy Elementary. There are two main parts to our proposal. One is an educational technology infusion, and the other one is technology education infusion. And we believe that incorporating these two, two ideas into learning opportunities, we will lead to post-secondary success. The teachers here tonight will be telling us a little bit about how they have done some of the educational technology and technology education they have done in their classrooms. So I'm going to turn it over to Beth Doolman.
Okay, over the past three years. Oh, come, microphone. My teacher.
Hey, I have to get you. Hey, I have to get used to using that mic.
All right. Okay, over the past three years, I've been working to integrate technology to really engage and empower my students to become 21st century learners. And so, one of the ways that I did this was through using Hour of Code and teaching students about computer programming, which is kind of the future of our world as everything moves into technology. And basically, in that program, students learn about how to read and write computer code. And then, in the picture, this summer, I was lucky enough to travel to ISTI, a conference in Denver, where I was able to meet the founder of Code.org and R2D2. And then another program, or another thing that I do with my students, is Mystery Skype. And in fourth grade, one of our standards that we work on is a geography standard. And instead of just reading in the book and doing the worksheets, we play a 20 questions game with students from around the world, and we're live Skyping with them. And then we ask questions, yes or no questions, to try to figure out where are these students located. And then they're asking questions of us and trying to guess where we are. So we're taking geography skills and we're using them firsthand with other learners from around the world. And so, all of this is just real students, real learning, made possible with technology.
All right. I truly do believe that Intech Great is a win-win for all students and staff at Sam Davy. We are very eager and really hoping to implement this as soon as possible. I've been working at Sam Davy, now I'm going into my fourth year. And I know, my first year coming in, I was pretty apprehensive to really, really utilize the iPads the way they can be used. They intimidated me a bit. So, I kind of used them as more of a substitute for maybe I'm showing work, keyboarding, you know, very minimal. But as I continue to learn and work with the iPad and really get some training from my colleagues, I've really redefined, I've used it in like year three, I've really redefined the way I've used it in the classroom with the students. And they use it just to carry out their daily work: assessments, research. It really is a representative of the SAMR model. And we talked about the immediate student, immediate student feedback, that is something that we really are working toward. This is one amazing way to get that. I mean, the kids are working, we're able to send that feedback immediately, we're able to review how the students are doing right there daily. So, thank you.
And here is the SAMR model that Ms. Morano was referring to. And that's model of computer education, substitution, augmentation, modification, and redefinition. We hope to redefine how we use our computers in our classroom.
Okay. My name is Erin McCracken. I teach first grade. And this past December, I had the opportunity to attend the TIES Technology Conference in Minnesota along with a few other teachers. And it was very empowering to see what other school districts are doing as far as technology education. For me especially, not being very technology savvy, it was pretty eye-opening, especially on the K2 front. I have an iPad in my class. I don't use the computer lab very much, but I decided when I left that conference that I was going to do something different to engage the kids and take it to another level. So what you see here is a project that we had done, that's my whole class, right there, they're pretty excited. And we have a shared research project that we do as part of one of our standards in first grade on the report card, and we research penguins. And it fits in with reading, writing, there's math, collaboration and teamwork and behavior expectations are included in that. And the kids are each grouped into teams, and they're assigned a type of penguin, and they have to research it, whether that's books, magazines, we used iPads, computers. Parents helped with this for the home component. And then, the kids were required to do a written report and a presentation to their classmates. And then we documented everything with an iMovie that was shared with Bill and parents, and we got a very good response so they could see what we were doing in the classroom. And then to take it to another level, a few weeks later, Beth Doolman helped me do a virtual field trip, which is something that I had never experienced. And we did a live broadcast. The lady on the screen there holding the live penguin is in South Africa at a penguin sanctuary. She did a whole presentation for the kids live from where she was. The kids got to go up to the iPad and ask questions and give her feedback, and it was really engaging to see. So my hope is, with the innovation zone, that we can continue to offer things like this to students as well as teachers in our building. Thank you.
All right. Beth, Erin, and Kelsey talked about educational technology. I'm going to talk a little bit about technology education. So at Sam Davy, we would really like all students to be engaged in the, the design process, the engineering process. So, I'm going to talk about two ways that fifth graders use the engineering process. The first one is, oh gosh, here's the engineering process. The first one was an extension of our FOSS variables unit, which dealt with buoyancy. And so, students collaborated with each other to design a boat, build it, then they would test it till it sunk, and then they would redesign it. So they were kind of going back and forth through that whole cyclical process. And they learned that sometimes in life, your boat sinks, but they figured out how to go and move on from that. Another one was the Genius Hour. I don't know if you're familiar with this, but this is one hour every week that students could use on a passion project. So they identified an area that they were really interested in. And then they had one hour in school and all the resources that we have at school to bring that idea to life and then share that with each other. So that was really powerful learning and very engaging for students. Thank you.
Can I make a comment? When you were talking about the buoyancy unit, all I could think about was the paperclip boat in kindergarten. Remember that one?
Yes. So, Intech Great is a six-year proposal. We are taking baby steps. We are starting, basically, trying to have professional development for staff, so they understand this type of, of learning process. And that's kind of where we're at now. It is not a wholesale change in the curriculum. We will still be following everything that our Teaching and Learning Department espouses, and, but we're just adding and tweaking things a bit. So we have, like I said, professional development for this next year is our big push. And if this proposal moves forward, this is where we want to go. iPad training, continued attendance at the Technology and Education Conference, which some of the teachers alluded to, and of course, the SAMR model of computer education. Business partnerships are something I have a letter drafted, living in the, or working in the North Side neighborhood there is just a tremendous opportunity of businesses who we would like to reach out to and establish a partnership with. And that's something I plan on spending the rest of my summer doing, so. So, we timed our program. It was six minutes long. I don't know how we did, but do you have any questions for us?
Commissioner Luganville?
It's really exciting. So, the next, if we were to approve this, the, kind of a whole next school year would really be about establishing the partnerships, the funding? What would you be spending like the first year doing?
Basically, making sure that all of our staff members understand, you know, what we have available to us in educational technology, and then also training them on what technology education is. And so we can make our students technology literate through STEM-type programs, project imagination that we heard of earlier today, things like that. So it's training here this first year and growing our capacity.
Commissioner Duex?
I didn't quite understand what you were talking about at the end, about finding businesses on the North Side.
Well, I just think in our neighborhood, on Star Avenue and as it goes out, Eddie Lane and Melby out there, we have a large, kind of a technology sector out there with McDonough Manufacturing and Parco Windows. There's just a large group of Presto Industries, that kind of thing. We thought, maybe we could help partnership with each other and learn from each other in terms of our educational technology and our engineering design process. Because we think a lot of those places engineer, design, and then create something. So somehow, meld that idea.
Yeah, it's a big industrial part. There's also a new restaurant at the Chivo Valley Airport.
Yes, we've been.
Bill, I have a question about this first year. Does the training and professional development tie to your innovation zone? Is it built into what you already have for a budget?
Yes, it is. We are, actually, we will be using our current professional development time. And we, we may buy some time in terms of days where we bring staff in for training, but for the most part, it will happen throughout the course of the school year, in our professional development Wednesdays, our PD days that are designated, and basically, yet to be determined completely. We're waiting for approval, and then we're going to plan how to.
Commissioner Luganville?
Just going to ask, I asked the same thing about the polar zone when they came, about the capacity and kind of the ideas of incorporating pieces to make it accessible as possible for EL students and students in special education. So wondering if you could maybe share, you have ideas or things that you're planning to do with that?
It's a good question. And one of the things I know is that we, we do have full staff support. We, we made sure we understood that everybody was part of this process. And we will, of course, include our EL participants as well as the whole school staff. So yeah, it is part of the proposal that it's school-wide and will affect everyone.
Our special ed department in April, they put together a whole unit that they, a STEM unit for this, the special ed educational students. And so they had all those components right within the special educational programming. So that was really neat.
That's awesome. Thank you.
One of the things they reported was their engagement was so much higher, especially at the end of the year. They, they really picked it up and.
And the behaviors decreased.
And yes, the problem behaviors decreased at the same time.
So if you, if you said that the engagement was more and the behaviors decreased, what were you using to measure that with?
Like major and minor data from our PBIS.
That'd be a really good thing to share with the board.
You mean like a before and after kind of thing?
Well, I think that's important because that's, that's important data tied to PBIS, which is connected to engagement. And that's some of the things we were talking about tonight that are real-time measurements and indicators of increased engagement. So.
A lot of what we talk about is hands-on and minds-on learning, which we think is a factor of behavior in a lot of the classrooms. So.
So there's.
If they're hands-on and minds-on.
There's your data.
The behavior will decrease, or the problem behavior will decrease.
Are we, we're good to go? Thank you very much. Anybody from the audience? You might want to, do you have anything else to add, I should ask? Yes? Anybody else? Anybody from the audience have a comment? Questions? Good to go. Thank you very much, Sam Davy.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I hope that was easy to do. He didn't look very nervous. Okay, we've got two more things on our agenda, correct? We need to go through the discussion and possible first reading of Policy 225. So, and then we'll do the discussion and possible first reading of Policy 133. And we still have a work session, so let's see if we can get through this pretty fast. So who would like to read? I mean, first of all, as a, should we entertain questions first, or should we do the reading first?
Shouldn't be much of a surprise to anyone.
We've worked on this for a long time. Joe, you have your light on. You want to read it? Sorry, Joe, but your light was on.
We can't popcorn read. "The evaluation of the superintendent shall be conducted under objective procedures and standards." I'm going to read it on my computer. That's not working. Just a second. All right. "The evaluation of the superintendent shall be conducted under objective procedures and standards. The evaluation shall be based on the superintendent's job description as well as the attainment of progress of the annual goals and objectives set forth by the Board of Education's ongoing strategic planning process and criteria identified in the approved evaluation document. One, the board shall identify and approve a timeline for the formal evaluation to review the performance of the superintendent on an annual basis. The following dates will be included: a date for the superintendent goal-setting and adoption of goals in February, a date for an interim progress report from the superintendent in July, and a date for the formal evaluation to be completed in December. The board shall approve the evaluation document, which will include a defined rating system, a space for written comments, and a list of the annual goals. This will serve as a worksheet for the board's composite evaluation. A 360-degree evaluation tool shall be used as input into the superintendent evaluation process. Using the information contained in that tool, the superintendent and board shall identify leadership goals. The board and the superintendent shall decide which groups will be surveyed and define the questions of the survey. The superintendent shall submit a self-evaluation that addresses the performance standards in the job description and the annual goals. This shall be presented as a formal report to the Board of Education. Each board member shall have the opportunity to complete a review of the superintendent based on the criteria established under this policy. The board shall consider individual board member reviews and shall discuss and complete the board's evaluation of the superintendent in closed session. The board's final written evaluation of the superintendent shall be presented to the superintendent. The board's final evaluation should be signed by the board president and attested by the board clerk and shall be filed in the Human Resources Office with the superintendent and with the board clerk."
Thanks, thanks, Joe. There's some question on the floor on whether that is the document that we vetted through Kirk.
I don't believe that number, number three is accurate. When I read through it, I'm not sure if this is the most, maybe it is the most recent draft from the committee that we voted out, but I felt like we changed section three to say "may be used," but I believe that's the only thing we're missing right now.
So we need to take this back and look at that and bring it back for a sec. Well, we can go right to the second reading. Okay? All right. Good. Any questions from the board? Commissioner Duex?
Just that I remember that we had said it may. That it was not affirmed.
Yeah, I'm wondering too, because we don't have the update on the bottom of 2016 either. We'll fix it. That, that happened. Oh, there it is. Woo-hoo. Okay. Well, there you go. Yeah, we'll look at it. We have time. And we'll bring it back next board meeting. That should be a quick fix. Okay? Anybody from the audience have any input? Discussion? Nope. Okay. Thanks, Joe, for reading it. I'm looking for someone else's light for the next one. I guess I'll read it. We'll go on to the next. Discussion, possible first reading of Policy 133, Board Vacancies. We've worked hard on this one, too. So I'll just read it through quick. Board Vacancies, 133. Cause of Vacancies, Board Member Resignation. If for reasons of health, change, and domicile, or other compelling reason, a board member decides to terminate service, the board requests earliest possible notification of intent to resign so that the board may plan appropriate for this ex, exigent, urgent need. I, I can't, I couldn't say that when we were in Policy and Governance. Resignation shall be made in writing and delivered to the board clerk. The resignation shall take effect at the time indicated at the written resignation, or if no time is there and indicated, then upon delivery of the resignation. Temporary vacancies for military leave. If a board member enters the Armed Forces of the United States and removes himself or herself temporarily from the school district, such temporary removal shall constitute a temporary vacancy of office. Temporary vacancies shall be filled as other vacancies are filled, except that no election need to be held to fill any part of a temporary vacancy. The term of the person appointed shall not extend beyond the expiration date of the term of the board member who entered federal service. In the event In the event the original board member completes the federal service and returns to the district during his or her original term of office, the board member may file with the clerk of the district within 40 days of completing the federal service, a statement under oath that the federal service has terminated and that the board member elects to resume office. Upon the filing of the statement, the term of the temporary board member shall cease, and the returning board member shall be entitled to resume the duties of the office. Filling vacancies. Vacancies on the school board shall be filled in accordance with the state law and in substantial compliance with the procedural guidelines outlined in this policy. Appointment guidelines. During the 60 days immediately following the date on which a vacancy first exists, the board may fill the vacancy only by an appointment made by a vote of the remaining members of the board. Any such attempt to fill the vacancy shall be consistent with the following guidelines. One, public notice of the board vacancy shall be issued by the district administrator. The notice shall include a deadline for applying to fill the vacancy. The deadline shall be at least 14 days after the date of that notice is first posted or published. Two, any qualified elector of the district who is interested in filing the vacancy may complete and submit the commissioner application to the Oak Clary School District as given in the application instructions. The application shall be advertised in a variety of communication mediums. All completed applications shall be provided to board members. Applicants shall be required to give a maximum three-minute statement. The board may ask questions of the candidate, but may not ask questions about how they may vote on future matters before the board. After all candidate statements have been made, the board shall select a candidate as follows. Board members shall be given a prepared ballot with applicants' names. Board members shall vote and sign their names to the ballots. Ballots shall be collected, and the votes with board member names read aloud and tallied by the clerk or clerk designee. Two, the successful applicant must receive a majority vote of all members, four votes. A, if there are more than two applicants, a first ballot shall be taken. If no one receives a majority of four votes, then the candidates receiving the lowest number of votes shall be dropped. If there is more than one candidate with the lowest number of votes, then all shall be dropped unless there would be only one remaining candidate. In that situation, then the vote shall be taken repeatedly until there are at least two remaining candidates after dropping those with the lowest number of votes. Once a candidate or candidates have been dropped, then a vote shall be taken on the remaining candidates. The elimination process shall be continued until one candidate receives at least four votes. If a tie occurs between two remaining candidates, then voting shall occur two more times for a total of three. If there is a tie on the third vote, then the heads and tails shall be assigned to the two candidates, and a coin shall be flipped by the clerk or clerk designee to determine the appointment. The person so appointed shall serve in that capacity until a successor is elected in the next school board election. Four, a qualified elector who is selected to fill a board vacancy shall not take office unless and until he or she has taken and filed the oath of office. The oath shall be filed on or before any date or deadline that the board establishes for the appointee to take office. Upon taking and filing the oath, filing the oath, the individual will file a campaign registration statement if required to do so by law. Vacancies not filled within 60 days. This is put in here and added because of what was done, happened down south, I think in Racine, where they had a deadlock for months on not filling a board vacancy because they were deadlocked for that long. So this has been added to help alleviate that. If a vacancy has not been filled by an appointment made within 60 days of the date on which the vacancy first exists, the board will attempt to fill the vacancy using the following procedure. If a duly-elected successor, elected at a spring election, will be taking office in the seat that is currently vacant within the next 60-day period that follows the initial 60-day period of the vacancy, no other appointee shall serve in the vacant seat in the interim. If the vacancy is not filled by the duly-elected successor in office pursuant to the previous paragraph, then at a regular board meeting held no later than 45 days after the end of the initial 60-day period of the vacancy, the board shall attempt to appoint a qualified elector to fill the vacancy by a majority vote. If after five rounds of voting, the board still has been unable to fill the vacancy, then the chairperson of the meeting shall declare a deadlock and immediately call for nominations in order to break the deadlock by the random selection of a nominee. A nominee must be a qualified elector who has submitted a sworn declaration of eligibility to fill the vacancy in question and who has not withdrawn from consideration. Each board member who is present at the meeting may nominate or support the nomination of only one nominee. Each nominee, if any, whose nomination is supported by at least two board members inclusive of the board member who initially made the nomination, will be included in the random selection process. Any nominee selected as a result of the random process is thereby selected to fill the vacancy. If for any reason, including the lack of any identified potential appointee, the vacancy is still unfilled 105 days following the date on which the vacancy first existed, then the procedures listed above shall be repeated at regular board meetings held at approximately monthly intervals until either the vacancy is filled or there are fewer than 60 days left before a duly-elected successor will take office in the vacant seat. So that was long and drawn out, but needed because of what's happening in the state sometimes when you're deadlocked and people can't work together, I guess. So, there you go. Any questions? Commissioner Duex.
I move to move it to resolution.
Commissioner Duex moves it to resolution?
Second.
Commissioner Fager, seconds. So next time, it will be on the consent agenda?
Technically, we don't take motions in committee, but we will move that forward.
Thank you, Penny. We do all sorts of things until I get used to it, I assume. It's fine. Yeah, thank you. Okay, good to go. We are through with the agenda, and we're going to break now five minutes and head to our work session for referendum planning, right? Okay. And the audience is invited to stay to listen to the discussion. Thank you.
This program is recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, you can contact us by calling 715-839-5067, or on the web at www.ccbtv.org.